John Mort's here. We are here with Ted Fletcher, who's incumbent, running for Shannon Doha City Council, position two. And it's, we are at Monday, March 25th. With me is Pat Tibbs, David Smith, James Byers, Dennis Tibbs, Larry Rogers. Thanks for coming out, Ted. Just a kind of a refresher here. This is a redo. We had technical difficulties on the first video, so appreciate you coming back out to do this all over again tonight. So, you know the routine. We'll start off with, you know, up to a five-minute opening, and then we'll do the Q and A around the table. Pat's gonna be our timer here. You have roughly up to two minutes to answer those questions. We can kinda keep the flow going.
Keep moving.
Yeah. If you're right in the middle of something, don't worry about it. Just go ahead and answer out, and we may have follow-on questions to that.
Okay.
With that, why don't we kick it off? And floor is yours, sir.
Great. Well, my name's Ted Fletcher. I'm running for Shannon Doha City Council, position number two. I've been married for 27 years to my wife, Ritzy, and we have five wonderful children, and have been Shannon Doha neighbors now for about six years. During that six years, we've had quite a bit of civic involvement, from being involved in the Civic Club to worked on the Home Rule Charter Committee, and then, of course, the last two years, I've had the privilege of serving our neighbors as Shannon Doha City Councilman. It was just two years ago that I was here. It seems like time flies, I guess, when you're having fun, but two years ago, I sat before you and had said that our platform was about a better Shannon Doha, and that we were gonna do that through better fiscal responsibility, better city management, and then better oversight, accountability, and transparency. So, I'm proud to be back before you here again, two years later, to let you know that the promises that we made through that campaign are promises that we've delivered to our residents in the city of Shannon Doha. Let me give you a kind of an idea during the last two years, some of the things that we were able to accomplish in that period of time. We were able to increase our reserves from 81% up to 107%. In addition to that, we decreased our general governance costs by over 20%. We lowered our taxes to our residents more in the last two years than the previous eight years combined, and that includes free trash service. We eliminated a proposed $2.4 million bond for a water treatment plant, which would've increased our residents' water rates by a minimum of 10%, but as much as 25%, increased it by 25%. But probably one of the greatest things that we did in fiscal responsibility was that our previous administration had approved a controversial severance package for a previous city administrator. It was a 24-month golden parachute, and we were able to renegotiate that and saved our residents over $273,000 in the process. When it came to better city management, we had several problems that we were working with during that time. Probably the biggest was retention of good-quality employees and staffing, and in fact, we were losing two out of every 10 per year, which was a big number. I'm happy to be able to tell you that the first fiscal year that we were in office, we lowered it from 21, a little over 21%, down to 7%. This fiscal year, we're at zero. So, we've kept everybody. We have 0% of our staffing that we lost. We eliminated unnecessary positions. We also, through that process, set staffing goals to improve productive results. We're actually providing more services with less people than the previous administration. In addition, we focused on resident-first customer service programs, so our residents know who we work for, and that's them. When it came to oversight and accountability, one of the things that we did is we added cameras to our council chambers, so every council meeting, municipal development, district meeting, every town hall meeting, all of that's recorded, and so our residents are able to plug in and watch that, and even come back at a later time and watch it as they needed to. It eliminated typed or having to type minutes and mistakes taking place through that, so people are able to see exactly what's going on in real time. We're rebuilding our, in the middle of rebuilding our website right now, make it a lot more user-friendly, but one of the big things that it allows us to do is integrate software that'll allow us to post raw data faster, and so by posting that quicker, it'll equip our residents with greater transparency overall as well. In addition to that, we changed our budget workshops. So, for decades, our budget workshop was always three days. It was a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and we crammed everything in those three days. We've now have changed that to where it's a little over a three-month process. We start sooner in the budget year, so it allows our residents to have greater engagement and opportunities for involvement, feedback, and then allows us to make changes as we go through based on their feedback and responses and needs. When it came, and then we also created joint session meetings. It's never been done in our city before, where we actually bring the MDD, Planning and Zoning, and Council together all in one meeting. Probably the greatest thing, two things I'll point out real quick. One, in regards to public safety, we've increased policing. We've added four new police officers, and we've seen some great results with that as far as being able to lower crime in our city. So, just kinda give you an idea of a couple of examples here real quick. When it comes to aggravated robbery, we've lowered that by 20%. Burglary, we lowered by 35%. Family violence is down 11%. And all of that has come by not just adding those police officers, but also giving our police department the crime prevention tools that they've needed to provide better policing opportunities for our city. And then probably the greatest thing that I'm most proud of is that I was able to work with our city attorney and our police department to pass a SORO, so a Sex Offender Residency Restriction Ordinance, which basically identifies that a predatory sex offender cannot live within 1,000 feet of a child's safety zone. A child's safety zone is defined pretty much as anywhere the children congregate regularly, so parks, schools, pools, arcades, bus stops. Well, we're only a two-square-mile city, so if you do the math real closely, we've eliminated the ability for a sexual predator to ever move next door to one of our neighbors ever again. So, those are some of the accomplishments right off the bat. So, again, as I mentioned before, these were promises that we made two years ago, and I'm happy to say that these are promises that we've delivered.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Appreciate the overview.
You have two minutes, Mr. Terry.
Two, yeah. Okay, so you had indicated in the opening, and then also in your overview of the bio that will release on April 15th, that the turnover rate had been reduced from 20 to seven and now to zero. What did y'all do to do that, to accomplish that? Does it have anything to do with Kathy Ryer coming back in? Or I think you mentioned on here, there's a revised Section 2, 209 of the communications part of the employee manual to open communications between employees. Does that have an impact, or what was it that has driven this high retention rate now as opposed to before?
I think the biggest thing was creating a culture and an environment that really values the employee for who they are. They're all extremely competent and talented individuals, and I learned a long time ago in business that when you hire the right people and you put them in an environment, they like what they do and love what they do, but if you put them in an environment that they love to be at and a part of, then you're really giving them an opportunity to shine. Under Kathy Ryer's leadership, she's done a great job in creating and building that culture and environment, and working with her department heads to really keep those communications open between departments, and that's critical. When you're the size of a city that we are, we only have about 3,800 to 4,000 residents right now, and so at our size, you have departments that are crossing over. They're helping one another, and we've opened the door to allow them to be able to speak freely with one another, pass on the information that they need together with department heads as well as with the city administrator, and then also with council. Council's very actively involved in assisting as we can. Kathy runs the city, makes the decisions for the city, but we're constantly involved in asking questions and interfacing with department heads and administration and even staff that aren't department heads.
Couple of quick questions. How big is the employee base in the city roughly, and how many are in the police department now?
So, right now, we have, I believe it's about 52 employees. We might be 54. I know there's a couple that we just hired this month that haven't been introduced yet, but they'll start on the first. One of those is a police officer, and one of them is Public Works, I believe.
Okay. How big is Police?
Police Department, I believe now is 29 or 30.
Okay. Larry, hold on.
Okay. In our general questions, we asked three of the challenges, largest challenges facing this position in office, and what's your roadmap to address them. One was growth, the other was infrastructure, and the other is redevelopment. And I guess I'm getting a little ahead of this, but could you give us an overview of what's happening in Shannon Doha in regards to new apartments, that type of new thing? And give us an explanation of redevelopment. What does that mean?
Sure. So, in the city of Shannon Doha right now, we have about 1,900 and I believe it's 86 new housing units that are coming, both on the east side as well as the west side of the freeway. The majority of the new development is high density, so they are apartments. But these aren't Section 8 apartments. These are high-end luxury apartments. These are built by custom home builders, and so the amenities within those apartments, again, is not gonna attract. The demographics on it is an executive, young executive. Well, it's kinda twofold. It's a young executive, but it's also the empty nester that is looking for a nice housing project that has upscale amenities and services. And so, again, the majority of the building that's coming in is high-density. The biggest part of that's 936 housing units on the east side, just in Metro Park alone. We've recently just approved 420 units on the west side off of Six Pines, and, but again, the demographics are much different. I believe the beginning starts, as far as rents go, start at $21,000 to $2,200 and goes up to $3,500. So, it's almost, in many cases, more than most people's house payments. So, we see that with a lot of the building that's coming in right now. Through that, there's almost 200, a little less than 200, single-family residents that are coming in as well. And, I'm sorry, what was the second question?
Well, just basically the definition of redevelopment.
Redevelopment. So, in the city of Shannon Doha, if we go from Wellman Road on the southbound feeder, if you're headed south, then from Wellman Road to Research Forest, this is an area in our city that we've had trouble with, and the reason we've had trouble with is 10 years ago, we rewrote the IDC that put in a 60-foot buffer. So, most of the businesses that are there on the 45-feet road, if they were to catch fire and burn down today, they could not rebuild because they're not zoned for that type of building any longer, which also means that if they come in and ask for a permit to do any improvements on the building, they're gonna be denied, and that's what's happened. So, one of the things that we need to do is go through and rewrite our IDC, work with our neighbors that are right there on that corridor, and rewrite that IDC to where it's gonna provide the benefits for our community that we need to continue to prosper forward.
Can I follow on on that real quick?
Of course you can.
How can that have been done up to now? I mean, you know, with the two years that y'all been in there, because that is kind of a blighted area through there.
It is. Needless to say, there was a lot of work to be done when we first came in, so we kinda prioritized, you know, the most important things first. So, we did pick it up this fiscal year. We did budget for it this year. We've already started rewriting the IDC, so it was just something that we couldn't get done in the first, you know, 16, 18 months that we were initially in office. But it was something that has been on the agenda, but again, there's been a lot of things that we needed to focus on, and again, this is still a part-time gig.
All right, Dennis? So, what's the history behind the golden parachute? How long's that been in place, and is it done now? And what positions have contracts now, and what kind of contracts are those?
So, originally, the city had passed an ordinance, well, there was an ordinance already on the books, and then two years ago in February, I believe it was, I believe it was February, they had entered into this agreement with the city administrator. Well, lo and behold, I had found an ordinance that said you can't enter into an agreement with the city administrator. And so, once that was made public, then they decided, well, what we need to do then is we need to come back, and even though we'd already passed an agreement and entered into a contract, since that's invalid, we need to change the ordinance, and then we can come back and enter into the agreement. So, that's what they did. They rewrote the ordinance, and then they came back immediately, so it was Agenda Item Two and then Agenda Item Three. So, they rewrote the ordinance, and then Agenda Item Three was to come back and pass the contract. So, it's only been two years now that the city's been able to enter into agreements or contracts. So, the contract was a 24-month golden parachute or severance package. The bigger problem with that is that there was a 60-day remedy clause, which basically meant you can't terminate somebody with cause with a 60-day remedy clause in the contract, because basically that means they can continue after you notify them and give them a 60-day notice. They can continue to do what they want for 59 days, but by the 60th day, they cure it, and you can't terminate them for cause for that situation any longer. So, it made it impossible for us to do that. Ultimately, what we did is we just kept the city administrator more accountable for what he needed to do and the actions that he needed to take. And so, through that process, he resigned, and we had to go through and negotiate as part of that resignation, his contract. So, we did, and we eliminated, like I say, the 24 months, and we ended up paying out, I think it was, we only ended up paying out less than half of that total amount.
So, what severance package does the current administrator have?
She is, she is under, she does have a contract, and I believe her severance package is 15 months. I'll have to go back to look specifically. It's been a while. It's been a year since we've written that agreement, and I wanna say it's around 15 months. And what we did is we went and we hired a consultant to give us terms within, for this position, within several cities, as well as surrounding cities, to determine how we're gonna attract a good-quality city administrator. And so, that was the reason we came back with the terms that we did. I believe that not only did we reduce the contract amount, we eliminated obviously the remedy clause, and then we also lowered the compensation in that position.
She's a city administrator, not a city manager?
Correct. There's, we have not been under a city manager position for several years, since, I wanna say it's 2006, somewhere in there. We've always been a city administrator position. The city changed to city management. The council members realized that that was a mistake, and then they ended up, once they terminated that, city manager went back and...
Isn't that kinda designated by the state, no matter how many in the population that you have?
No.
Called it.
I don't believe so. Otherwise, we would've never been able to have the city manager. It's how you, it's how you write your charter, but under a general law city, my understanding is it's not governed by.
Well, understanding your alter existence, you actually have to make a living, and you do that as a businessman, a small business. Now, as a patron to many of the businesses in Shannon Doha, you know, I live nearby, I'm fairly certain most of those are small businesses as well. So, I know in your personal experience, your business struggled like seven or eight years back, and you turned it around. Explain to us how that went, what you learned from that, and what can you do for those? I mean, you've talked about a lot that you've accomplished for the city manager and so forth. What can you do in the future to perhaps make things work better for your small businesses in the area?
So, that's a great question, and yes, I'm, we're a small business owner as well. We, I'm a managing partner for WMF Holdings, which is a real estate development and management group, and basically, we build and manage senior housing specifically for those that are afflicted with Alzheimer's or other age-related dementia. So, the biggest thing when it comes to small businesses is step out of the way and let free enterprise rule. People need to realize that when there's a lot of restrictions in the marketplace, that that's not necessarily favorable for business. And so, step out of the way and become business-oriented. And what I mean by that is, a good example is, you know, that area of redevelopment that I was speaking about earlier, we don't need to give incentives. We need to give the free enterprise the opportunity to do what the free enterprise system can do, and people will step up and invest in their businesses and move forward. But we have to be able to change how we govern businesses as well. I think in the past, the city of Shannon Doha is focused strictly on, you know, how much revenue will this business generate for our city?
Sure.
And while that's important, don't get me wrong, that created the foundation within our city, I also believe it's important to look at what the business actually is, what they produce, and the benefit that it can provide to the community. Tax dollars, what services are really gonna provide as a benefit for the city? And in some cases, those tax dollars get moved to the side because the benefit factor is much greater.
Right.
So, I think, you know, from a business perspective, that's what we need to do as a city, to continue to attract small businesses, and is be open to work with them, number one, and number two, make sure that our legislative process is favorable to them, not against them.
Thank you. You know, it's a good thing about re-dos, we get to redo the questions.
Right.
That's the answers. So, you know, the first go-around, the first go-around, you talked about the five-star system at the Texas Controller. I was really intrigued by that. Can you talk about what it took to implement that, and what benefits you saw of getting the first two stars?
So, the first two stars were actually done before I got here.
Okay.
And so, those two stars within our city were important, obviously, because it's a representation of transparency, and it's something that the Controller's Office comes up with and what their guidelines are. And the five-star system will never achieve all five stars. One of them has to do with public, not public trading, but public investment for pensions. We're not in that large of a city that will ever be in that type of a position, so we'll never achieve that star. So, the stars are important because it does, again, for our residents identify, you know, the levels of transparency that we're meeting from a state perspective. I think what's more important is to recognize that it's not a matter of achieving what the requirements are for the star, but it's actually overachieving and providing even greater transparency for our neighbors to be able to experience the level of government that they need. And that was always, and that's what my thing has been even prior to running, last year, was recognizing that, look, you're not being transparent because you tell everybody what you've done so far. You're being transparent when you include them in the process of governing, so they can help influence and press government forward that's gonna be best for the people. That's what being transparent is.
And then you, two of the big services you provide is police and fire, and you contract for the fire.
Correct.
But you do your police. So, if you had to look at your total budget, what percent of your budget goes toward police and fire?
A large portion goes towards police and fire, probably, probably pretty close to half.
Have, you know, I was curious about the answer, but my experience says the same thing, but you know, just, have you ever talked to the Woodlands and their plans and how?
So, well, we all know that the Woodlands, the Woodlands is going to incorporate into their own city at some point. They've been talking about that for years, and it's been made even clearer here recently that that's the direction that they're headed. They've even talked with our police department that that's how our police department works with our citizens. That's how they wanna model their police department, is the same. So, as those changes take place, obviously, we have an interlocal agreement regarding fire, so they currently provide our fire services. And I think that that's something that as we move into the future to provide the solutions that our first responders are really gonna need, we're gonna need to move away from contracting those services and bringing those services back internal, to where we'll not only have our own fire, our own police department, but our own fire department as well. And we're paying almost a million dollars a year. It's about $900,000 a year. Part of that contract is, our police does provide patrol services up Grogan's Road, and so the Woodlands Township currently credits those funds to our fire bill, but it works out to be about $220,000 a year, so we're still, you know, hit with a $700-plus-thousand a year bill for fire services. And that's if they don't purchase any additional equipment. If they decide that they're gonna purchase equipment, then our and our local group requires us to pay that. So, for example, two years ago, they decided to purchase a new fire truck. They needed a new ladder truck, and so at the end of the day, they handed us a bill for $500,000, which, fair enough, but the problem was is that we'd already done budget, and so we get a bill after budget's approved, after tax rates are approved, and here's a half-million dollars that we're stuck with making some decisions about. And again, that happened before I got here. That was over two years ago that that actually took place, but absolutely, we're gonna need to re-look at bringing our fire services in-house, and I have some specific strategies to be able to do that to where it's not gonna increase property taxes, but we'll get to that, I'm sure, in another question.
Yeah, for less than 30 seconds, we probably ought to save that question for the next round already.
Sorry.
No, that's all right.
I wish it was a yes/no question.
So, your opponent has staked a position for removing possibly the health insurance and compensation for city council. What's your position, and what do you see city council doing about that, if anything, from point forward? Since typically, these positions are volunteer, like the township, I think, is all volunteer. I'm not saying that all the cities are, but you know...
It's actually more the opposite direction. More cities are not volunteers. But I think that we talked about what happened two years ago in budget, the first budget session that we had. So, the first budget session that we had, Councilman Beavers brought up the fact of, you know, let's look at eliminating compensation... let's look at eliminating, um, uh, compensation for councilmen. And my response to that was, I have no issues with that. However, there were other councilmen that did have issues with that. Two votes is not a, a majority in our city. It takes three. So at that point, it basically went nowhere.
So did y'all take a vote on that?
So it was discussion only. And as we discussed, it was pretty evident that that wasn't gonna happen, um, during that time. So there wasn't an actual vote that was taken. Like I say, it came up during budget workshop. So it wasn't actually a motion to, to change an ordinance because it is a city ordinance of what the pay actually is, which is four oh nine oh nine per meeting, um, is what it works out to be. So if I attend all twenty-two meetings like I have the last two years, then, um, uh, our compensation comes out to nine thousand dollars.
And so when you say comp, is that both, uh, wages, the salary, uh, that you're compensated as well as healthcare?
So health, so I was gonna talk about health insurance next. Cause there's, one, one of the things that, that we did eliminate, um, was that in addition to, uh, the compensation per meeting, there's a stipend for cell phones, there's a stipend for, um, your electronics, so if you have an iPad or computer. And there's also a stipend for, um, internet. And those combined total a hundred dollars a month. So one of the things that everybody agreed on was eliminate that. So we did eliminate that, um, twelve hundred dollars a year per councilman. The health, and here's how the health insurance falls. You can't just eliminate the health insurance because we're W-2 employees. And as a W-2 employee, if you're offering health insurance, it has to be offered to everybody. And so, um, so that's where the health insurance falls in. I do happen to take the health insurance. Um, the city pays seventy-five percent of me, um, and I pay a hundred percent of my dependents. So the city, you know, the fallacy that's been out there is that the city's paying for all this health coverage for me and my family, and that's not the case. They, they pay seventy-five percent of mine, and then I pay a hundred percent of my dependents.
And the taxes, we asked a question about the city tax rate. And, uh, the sales tax is eight point two perc- eight, eight point two-five percent of the city. Uh, and the city receives one point five percent, and the MDD receives point five percent. Could you explain what the MDD is, what its function is, and why is it getting a tax portion separate?
So the MDD, um, is actually a, a separate entity from, um, the city itself. It has a board of directors. Um, it's not governed by city council. City council can make requests. The MDD stands for Municipal Development District. And basically, what, what the intent behind the MDD was is to, um, uh, there's, there's several things that it can do, but they're all restricted funds. They have to do these things in specific. So it was designed to help bring businesses into the community. Our position has always been not to pay incentives to bring a business in. So even though we have a municipal development district, we use it for the other purposes that it can be used for, such as infrastructure, roads. I had mentioned in my opening statement that we eliminated the bond. The MDD paid for a large portion of that new water, uh, treatment facility, um, because it can. And so one of the things that we set as council is a policy that any capital improvement projects that, uh, the MDD, uh, is qualified to pay for, go in as a request to the MDD for payment. They could pay all of it, a percentage of it, or none of it. That way, those, those, uh, type of projects don't come out of our general fund. One of the things that they can do is pay for, uh, water, water treatment facilities, water sewer, uh, roadways, drainage, parks. Those are all part of the, the things that the MDD can pay for. So a couple of years ago, they paid for sidewalks. The only problem was is the city paid for sidewalks out of their general fund also, which was about a half a million. Unfortunately, those sidewalks don't connect, so it's a sidewalk to nowhere. So for me, that's frivolous spending. If we're not gonna be able to put the sidewalks, parks, and pathways together, what, what's really the purpose behind it? But the MDD is there to be able to generate that tax base. We've had discussions of, of, in the future, as we become built out, um, what will be the true purpose of the MDD? And I believe that, that, uh, we would look at reducing, um, some of that tax. Unfortunately, if we eliminate that tax, the county will pick it up, um, and use it for its projects rather than staying focused on the projects that we need done in the city. But what we can do is we can reduce that half, uh, of a percent and split it. Keep ha- a, a quarter of the percent into the, uh, MDD, but that would also allow us to create an emergency services district, um, which would allow us to pay for our own fire department.
If you don't have any control, if I could expand a little bit, if you don't have any control and it's a separate board, uh, how is that board, uh, established? Is that elected?
It's appointed.
It's appointed by the city council?
So the mayor makes recommendations. So he interviews the candidates and then makes recommendations. And then the vo- the, uh, councilmen vote, um, on approving or denying.
Can a councilman be on that board?
There are two, uh, the way that the, uh, uh, board rules are written, there's two councilmen that'll be on that board. Up, up to two can be, doesn't mean they have to be.
Thank you.
You know, Shenandoah has a pretty nice website and, uh, got a lot of charts and things on it. One of them here shows expenses and revenue, uh, for a period of eight years. Revenue has really not changed over that period of time. Expenses have gone way up. At the very beginning, it looked like we had about, uh, our Shenandoah had about twice as much revenue as they were spending. So it would look like they ended up with a big pot of money somewhere. So what, what would've happened to that money three or four, five years ago, do you know? Twice, almost twice the expenses.
I'm not, I'm not sure, uh, exactly what that was spent on. Couldn't tell you. I know probably, uh, a good percentage of that five years, and again, I've only been in the city for six. So five years ago, I, I wasn't heavily involved in their, the government process. But I don't wanna speculate and guess, but, but I would anticipate that, um, part of that probably would've gone into, uh, capital improvements within the city. At that time, uh, we were, uh, we didn't have, uh, streets with curbs and cutters and storm drains. We were all ditches, open ditches, similar to what Oak Ridge North is, and so.
That would've been reflected in expenses, wouldn't it, if they, if they did that?
That should've been reflected in expenses at some point.
Cause even the last few years, there was, looked like twenty percent or so more than the expenses and revenue.
And, and what happens with the, the reserve base is exactly that. Is that we're a zero-line, um, budget system, so it, it's not if you di- you know, if you don't use it this year, then it's not there next year. And just because you didn't use it this year, that's not where we start with the budget. We started zero and we actually build the budget for the actual needs that the department has.
Do you have some cash on hand?
We do have quite a bit of cash, a hundred and seven percent reserve base. So that means that if, if a hurricane came up, you know, the wind tunnel here on I-45, and that's pretty much where our city sits. If it hit a category five on the Gulf and a category four to us in Shenandoah and it wiped our city out, our city would continue to, um, provide services for a year without any income coming in from sales taxes or anything else. So we do have a strong reserve base. In fact, that, our auditor, uh, came in and did their report here recently and said that the state of Shenandoah is very strong.
Quick follow-on to that, did, uh... Never mind.
I'll talk to you about mobility. Now, I understand, uh, for one county commissioner, well, first of all, we know a lot of the roads around the mall, the interstate, Research Forest, 242, we have a real, and going up to 1488, uh, a real mobility problem. Now, I understand that back when they built the flyover for 242, they also considered building a flyover to go under Research, but that Shenandoah, this is before your time, Shenandoah, uh, would allow it because it would interfere with, they felt, with local business traffic, even though on 242, I don't think Walmart's been hurt anybody with the flyover. Nevertheless, us as an organization, the Tea Party, have been struggling, uh, for six years trying to deal with our county commissioners and the lack thereof of a real mobility plan. And we know there's the Greater Houston Area Council that all the state and federal money has to go through. We've had very inadequate representation, uh, on that board to get our part of that money, uh, for our county. So my question is, what can you do, not personally, but what can the city of Shenandoah do, uh, with your encouragement to help us, one, acquire the funds that we're entitled to, state and federal, to deal with these mobility issues that don't go away, somehow keep growing? And what do you see as the need, uh, where Shenandoah is concerned, to deal with the traffic flow problems that we're acquiring? We have acquired.
So Shenandoah does have some mobility issues. There's no doubt about that. And, uh, we can place the blame on a lot of places, but the reality is if, if we just put all that blame on the Woodlands but never try to coordinate with the Woodlands to come up with a problem. We're, a- as I mentioned before, we're kind of a splinter on the bat when it comes to, you know, dealing with some of these other entities. And if they wanted to, they could say, we don't need to deal with you. We'll just go do what we wanna do. Fortunately, uh, our leadership has been able to step in and build relationships, um, with the Woodlands Township as well as with our county commissioners. And Shenandoah's kinda unique.
Who are your county commissioners?
So I was just gonna cover that. We're kinda in a unique spot within the, the county because we border three different precincts. Precinct two, precinct three, and precinct four. So that's Commissioner Riley, Commissioner Noack, and Commissioner Metz. And so, uh, so not only do we have to, to coordinate with them, but we also have to coordinate with the Woodlands Township as well as Tech Dot.
Bit of a motley crew.
So we're just a little two-square-mile city here that, you know, fortunately, they've given us a seat at the table to talk. And fortunately, have, have listened to the suggestions that we've made. But I don't think that that would've come strictly by saying, well, we didn't create the problem, so we're just gonna do our own thing. And I, I think that's what's gonna keep Shenandoah strong in the future, is for Shenandoah's leadership to be able to, um, continue those relationships regardless who's in the position, um, but be open for those discussions. We still have to work, you know, when we look at our mobility issues, some of those we can, we can repair on our own, and we're, we're doing so. Some of those, you know, in most cases, because, for example, if it's Research Forest, um, we're gonna have to work with Commissioner Noack. On Grogan's, we're, and north of Research Forest, so south of Re- for Research Forest is Noack. North of Research Forest is, um, Commissioner Riley. And then we go east of the freeway and we go into Metz's district. So right now, we have several projects to try to stay advanced of what the growth is that's coming. And, uh, I, I can answer that in another question if you'd like, or I can finish answering in this one.
Why don't you take a little time for me and continue the topic?
So, so when it comes to that mobility and being able to advance, you know, ahead, um, some of the infrastructure that's needed, some of the projects that we're currently working on, um, is expansion of Tamina Road East, um, of 45 specifically. Commissioner Metz has committed to a three-lane, uh, road, uh, from David Memorial East. So there'll be two lanes of traffic and a center turn lane. At Tamina and David Memorial, um, he's also committed to helping in, uh, expanding that to, uh, three-lane intersection, um, headed west on Tamina towards 45. So that's gonna open three lanes of traffic there next to Home Depot. So we've already closed the median. Um, so our next project is gonna be to, uh, right now, there's three lanes to go across, but when you make that, um, right turn heading westbound off of Tamina, uh, or off of David Memorial onto Tamina, um, you only turn into two lanes of traffic. So we have to be able to expand that to a third lane. The problem is that we have to move the traffic signal box back, and that's where Commissioner Metz will come in, and he's committed funds for that. And then, of course, headed to, up north, 242, um, that's a combination of, uh, the city, um, Metro Park.
You're still talking about David Memorial?
David Memorial, correct, north up to 242. So that's, uh, that'll take the funds from the city. Metro Park, um, uh, is currently the, building a, a five-hundred-million-dollar, uh, sixty-nine-acre complex over there. And those roads will end up being city-owned when he's done. And then it'll also take, uh, Commissioner Metz, I think has about a mile in there. And then Conroe, city will have a half a mile in there, and that will complete the construction through. And then headed back west on, on, uh, Research Forest, um, it'll be six lanes of traffic going under the freeway, um, that will continue as six lanes of traffic, um, headed onto Research Forest, which right now, we only have two lanes that head, um, straight through on both sides. So we're gonna add an extra lane there. We're also going to, um, change the, uh, as you're headed southbound on the feeder, the U-turn lane that comes underneath the freeway, um, and then heads back north on the feeder, that will become a dedicated lane. And so, uh, one of the left turn lanes, um, headed northbound, um, there at that same intersection, you have the option of going straight or turning left. Traffic studies showed us that seventy-eight percent of the people actually turn left. So we can eliminate that lane without increasing any traffic in the other two lanes. But what it does is it frees up the southbound U-turn lane, which often is backed up, um, uh, all the way up to, uh, the other side of the Days Inn, um, in the evening hours or peak hours. And then by opening up three lanes, both sides of Research Forest all the way through, um, that'll still free up some traffic. But eastbound on Research, right now, there is a right turn lane yield. We're gonna make that a dedicated right turn lane, so there'll be another lane added there that will, will ease some of that traffic. Any way that we cut it and look at it at this point, um, we're a service level F at that intersection. And it doesn't matter really how much we make changes to it in that degree. I think we're gonna change ten seconds, but it doesn't change our service level. So queuing is gonna be a big thing as well, um, especially off of Six Pines and some of the other, uh, traffic lanes that flow eastbound, um, Six Pines as well as Pinecroft. So, uh, uh, so yes, mobility is an issue, but there are mobility plans in play currently. One of the other things that we're working with Tech Dot on is, uh, being able to add an on-ramp between Research Forest and, uh, Lake Woodlands. Currently, right now, if, if you, uh, um, don't come off of 242 and hit the on-ramp there in Shenandoah, your next on-ramp isn't until you get up to Woodlands Parkway. And so, uh, with, with the growth of not just our city, but the growth, uh, in traffic in, in the Woodlands coming in through Research Forest, then, you know, we really need an extra, uh, on line, uh, uh, on-ramp to be able to move traffic into, uh, and onto the freeway.
What's the prospects of that happening?
We're dealing with Tech, we're, we're, we're dealing with Tech Dot, so it's, it'll take some time. We're in phase two with Tech Dot right now, which is their comment in the part of the planning phase. So, you know, we're, we're, most of these, unfortunately, processes take three to five years, and Tech Dot, you can add a couple of years onto that, so.
And David Memorial, what's the timeline on?
David Memorial will be within the next three to five years, um, which that's what most of this development will take, um, across the board. We have, uh, there's financial commitments from, um, obviously, the city of Shenandoah, Commissioner Metz, and, um, uh, Metro Park. Conroe has now provided a financial commitment other than an interest that they'll, they'll do this, but they're not gonna commit any money to it until they have to, which is, you know, a couple of years down the road. But all of them have been at the table, um, in, in talking and, and commitments.
I have a quickie, um, back to the MDD. So the MDD has a board, it has bylaws. So if it needs to, uh, need a lawyer to review a contract, needs to buy something, do they use city employees?
They use the, uh, city attorney for that.
City atti- do they, do they pay for that out of their budget?
They do.
They do?
Yes, sir.
So they don't really get any services from the city that are not paid for?
That's correct. They, they write a check to the city, uh, e- every year, um, as part of their budget process for any services that are provided by the city, whether that's through the city administrator, uh, any personnel that they utilize, uh, for the MDD, um, attorneys, um, engineering, any of that. And the same is true for CBB or Convention Visitors Bureau.
Professional services are no bid typically, no bid contracts?
Correct. So, so professional services being the city attorney and the city engineer, um, that's correct. They are not required to go out for bid. I don't believe that our contract with either one of them, I know since I've been there... I don't believe that our contract with either one of them, I know since I've been there, has not changed, has not increased. In fact, for our city attorneys, decreased because this, this council doesn't believe in litigation. That doesn't mean that we believe in settling right off the bat either, but there's a time and a place for that. I've learned in business that the only people that win in court are attorneys. So anything that you can do to stay out of court, the better off you are.
Two quick questions and then we'll wrap it up. Do you?
Can I quote right?
Oh, you.
With the high density housing.
Yes, ma'am.
I've seen what has happened on 1488. What kind of compensation are y'all making for the traffic that's going to increase in Shenandoah?
So the traffic, so that was a big one, especially on the west side of the freeway there for us. So we really looked at that project closely. That didn't, that didn't come to council and boom, it was approved. The city staff and our engineer worked over three months with the entity coming in to bring those improvements. That property is currently owned by the Howard Hughes Company, so neither, neither I describe what they paid for it. Because it wasn't Shenandoah City limited property values. It was the Woodlands property values is what they paid for it. So they are building an eight story apartment complex there that's part of the Lifetime Fitness. And they're building, Lifetime Fitness is building a full story property there. And a lot of people look at that and say, well, you know, Lifetime Fitness, this is a gym membership. I believe the way that they describe it to us is that this is a, this is a country club without a golf course. And so inside, and that was one of the questions that I had early on with them is, okay, so you're taking 11 acres of the 20 that we have left to build on. Please tell me, you know, how, how we should justify that as a city in, in what the city will receive and the residents will receive as benefit. And so, three things that we looked at there. One, mobility. Two, what was coming into the city. And then three, what was the highest and best used project for that site? So when we looked at the mobility, the traffic study that we did wasn't a, a traffic study that was just simply based on projections. They actually did, they actually took the results of five other exact properties that they currently own and pulled their traffic study from it. So the traffic study that was produced to us identified that these are real time vehicles and real time data or actual data that would be utilizing the roadways. And so, again, we went back and forth with them for over three months just on the traffic study alone. And so there was a lot of things that, that we identified through that process. Some simple things such as, you know, cutting into the, the median to give us two left turn lanes. And then how much traffic was actually gonna head north to go back east to head back south. A lot of traffic will go back south to head east to go south. Meaning that they're trying to get on the freeway, that they're not all gonna come straight up to Research Forest and try to go across. They're gonna head south and then try to cut across on Lakefront or go all the way to Lake Woodlands and cut across on Lake Woodlands. And that's what the traffic study identified to us. Sales tax wise, the Lifetime Health Fitness Center will produce five, I believe it's $5.1 million in an 18 year period of time as far as sales tax dollars go. So in that area, that's not a retail district for us. That's a commercial office type district for us. So, so to have that type of revenue and then as far as property tax dollars go during the next 18 years, they'll, they'll pay in 13, I think it's 13.7 million dollars during that same period of time. So roughly, it worked out to be almost a million, a little less than a million dollars a year in revenue that was coming to the city from that one project.
Where exactly is that located?
So that's located actually on Six Pines, just.
In Research?
Six, Six Pines, about a half mile south of Research Forest. And then, then highest and best used. So the other thing that we looked at, and if you look at the traffic study that they provided, Lifetime Fitness actually creates more traffic than the apartment building does. So, and again, this is real data. This isn't estimated or this is exactly what's been used in, in five different properties that they currently own. The other thing that we looked at was, okay, it's an apartment complex. Knowing the cost of the land, if an office building were to take its place, it would be no less than eight, eight stories high. Which one's gonna create more traffic flow in peak hours? Undoubtedly, the office building. What else is gonna go in that space? I mean, it's very limited use because of the cost of the land. You know, if we were dealing with something that was, you know, 15, 16, $20 an acre, but we're talking land value that's two times that. So, so that changes the, the focus of the project from the beginning of what actually can go there. We, we just had a traffic study for a nine story building in the hospital district. Is that not gonna create more traffic than an apartment complex? Absolutely it will. So as far as the highest and best use for the land itself, the benefit for the residents, adding, you know, adding 420 new housing units, which is, depends on whose numbers you want to use, is gonna, you know, create anywhere from 650 to 1,000 new, new neighbors in, in our community who are gonna do what? Who are gonna shop, who are gonna go out to eat and increase our sales tax dollars again. You know, obviously, I, I feel that from that standpoint, addressing those three things in specific is the right choice at the right time for our city.
Does Lifetime Fitness own the apartment complex or do you have two different business entities?
So Lifetime, they're two different business entities. Lifetime is, is, will be built first. There are cash on hand, building, there's no loans involved, they're building everything ground up. The other one, this is a $130 million project, so the, the other entity is nationwide with billions in assets and, you know, neither one of them will have any problems sustaining themselves for any periods of time.
So did Bill O'Spore approve this?
I'm sure not.
Well, the legends didn't since they're the dawn.
Well, unfortunate, that was an unfortunate situation.
Yeah. Quick question, yes or no? Any aspirations for higher office than what you're doing now?
You know, my focus, I know you said yes or no, so I'll say yes and no.
Cause you were doing the word.
No, as far as, you know, my focus is, is on the city of Shenandoah and what I need to do for the city. I think there's always new challenges that arise. And I think first and foremost, our challenges lie within our city at this point and those need to be addressed and focused on. You know, it, I guess it would depend on, you know, the position and the timing of my life at the same time and, and how prepared I am for really wanting to take that on.
The next logical step would probably be commissioner.
Know anybody that's retiring? I'm sure there's a few people, sure there's a few people farther ahead of mine than myself.
That's a good time to wrap it up, if you want to take up five minutes and then we'll.
Sure. Again, my name's Ted Fletcher, I'm running for Shenandoah City Council Position Two. I truly believe at this point in time for the city of Shenandoah that we need a, a strong, proven visionary leader in order to keep Shenandoah strong and focused in the right direction, to be able to address the three major areas that I see within our city that, that we're faced with as challenges. And, and that's growth and development, mobility and infrastructure, as well as public, public safety. We have a lot of, of strong strategic plans to be able to move our city forward in the right direction. I believe that the, the last two years has proven what type of a leader I am and the commitment that, that I make, that I'm a man of my word to keep those commitments and follow through on them. But at the end of the day, I work for, for our neighbors. I don't work for anybody else. And so at the end of the day, that's, that's who I have to answer to. And that's who I will continue to answer to when reelected for our next two year term. So I simply ask for the support of, of our community to be able to have that opportunity to serve and deliver on promises once again. So I thank you all for the time and the questions. And hopefully I'll be sitting here two years from now, being able to say promises made, promises delivered.
Well, thanks for coming back.
Thank you.